The Rochester City Council Candidate Forum continues.
And welcome back to the final segment of our ABC 6 Rochester Post Bulletin debate for the candidates running for Rochester City Council members in wards two, four, and six. Now, we will be hearing from our three candidates running for the soon-to-be vacated seat for Rochester City Council President. I'm your co-moderator, Betsy Singer, with ABC 6 News, along with Randy Peterson with the Rochester Post Bulletin. We are going to take 30 minutes. We have five scheduled questions for each of you. We will see if we can get to them. I will give each of you a brief introduction, and then we will start with opening statements. I will start with Brooke Carlson, who is a consultant and strategist for the Rochester Nonprofit Consortium, a group that assists with community response to COVID-19, especially in the social services sector. She is a proud Rochester native. We welcome you, Brooke. Kathleen Harrington is the president of the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the former division chair of Government Relations at Mayo Clinic, and prior to her coming to Rochester, spent 30 years in Washington, D.C., working on health policy issues. Welcome, Kathleen. Vanjie Castro is well-recognized as a community organizer, having worked on the Rochester Diversity Council for a number of years, an outreach manager for Planned Parenthood, and, most recently, organizing efforts to draw more attention to ranked choice voting. Angie, welcome. Vanjie. Let's start with opening statements. And Brooke, we will begin with you.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here today. It's wonderful to be in one of our local nonprofits and right next to the rec center where I grew up playing hockey and now get to coach both of my sons' hockey teams. So, as Betsy said, I'm a Rochester native and proud JM Rocket. I moved my family back here to raise my children, be close to my parents, but also to focus my work in a community that I'm deeply passionate about. These are incredibly difficult times that will require tough decisions to move us forward. As a small business owner, a leader in the nonprofit community, a public health professional, and a mother of two young sons, I share the heartache and worry felt by so many in our community, and I know my experience makes me uniquely positioned to help our city face the challenges ahead. I have committed my career to leading partnerships to address the underlying causes of inequity and improve our communities. I use my expertise in urban planning, geography, and public health to create strong, inclusive communities where people can thrive. At the Minnesota Department of Health, I was part of a team that led the passage of legislation to improve statewide health outcomes and reduce healthcare costs. I convened a bipartisan group to create a $47 million statewide program that operated in 86 counties and nine tribal governments. More recently, I convened 10 area counties, multiple health systems and health plans, and community-based organizations to create the governance for our Southeast Minnesota Regional Mental Health Crisis Center, which just broke ground. And as Betsy said, I am currently leading the nonprofit consortium, which is bringing together partners across the community, the county, the city, Mayo, the school district, and many nonprofits to collectively identify and address our most urgent and pressing community needs during COVID. I am committed to both protecting people and our economy. In this time of uncertainty, it is my sincere commitment to bring our many voices together to create a community that is more just and motivated by compassion and hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Kathleen?
Thank you very much, and thank you so much to our host, 125 Live, and to other sponsors, ABC News 6 and the Post Bulletin, and thank you to all of you who have tuned in today on Facebook or on the website, watching today or in the future. My name is Kathleen Harrington. I am running for city council president, something probably a year ago I would not have thought I'd be doing. But let me just tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a mom. I was a working mom, a single mom, raising a daughter who I'm so proud of now, and now I'm a grandmother, discovering the depths, the well of love that I never, ever knew possible. And I am running based on my record of strong, proven leadership here in town and in Washington. Prior to coming to Minnesota, I served in the Congress as a chief of staff. I was one of a handful of women who were chiefs of staff in that time. I have strong skills, proven back then, of working across the aisle to drive policy solutions that are in the best interest of people, not partisanship. I also worked in key departments, Department of Labor, where I fought fiercely against discrimination in the workplace, against racism, sexism, and ageism, discrimination against workers, and for workforce training. And finally, one of the most incredible experiences of my life was working at HHS in Medicare, where I was part of the team that stood up the program to provide seniors and people with disabilities prescription drug benefits. Prior to that, our federal government would pay for open-heart surgery, but not Lipitor. I'm proud of that accomplishment, and when I first came to Minnesota, I continued that work in my volunteer work, serving as the chairman of the Minnesota Board on Aging. So, I am running now. As I said, surprise to me. A year ago, I would have thought, this is the time for others to lead. But now, I think it is the time for people with experience to help lead our city through these unprecedented times of the economic turmoil we face and dealing with the impact, realization of systematized racism in our community. I look forward to the rest of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Vanjie?
Hello. Thank you for having me in 125 Live, Post Bulletin, and KAL. So, I've thrown my hat into the ring for a city council president, because if we want real progressive ideas and substantive change to happen, we need leadership who will bring those ideas to the table and implement them. My family immigrated here from the Philippines, and I was raised in the Bay Area. I received my associate's degree in liberal arts at the local community college, and then a bachelor's in political science at the California State University East Bay while working full-time. I've lived here in Rochester for 10 years, and I worked at the local coffee shop across the street for about a year, and then started working at the Diversity Council for about seven years, collaborating with school districts and other organizations to deliver anti-bias workshops to help fight systemic and institutional racism. I've also worked for Planned Parenthood as an education outreach manager, and in 2019, as Betsy said, I was a community organizer with Fair Vote Minnesota, working to expand ranked choice voting in greater Minnesota. I've dedicated my life working for the people in nonprofits, on boards, task force, and several different committees. Public service is a family tradition. My brother and sister are retired Army. My dad worked as a certified public accountant for Alameda County, and my nephew-in-law is a police officer in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I believe we need to change the face of Rochester leadership, because the future looks like us. We need to heal this city as we continue to live through a global pandemic, both COVID-19 and racism. It's time to lead with love and care for all people, so we can make our community a place where all Rochester residents feel included in the growth and vitality of the city we live and work in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vanjie.
Thank you. And welcome candidates. In response to the death of George Floyd, the city issued a community letter earlier this year committing to ongoing efforts around the issue of social equity. What additional steps does the city council need to take in this direction? And we'll start with Brooke.
Towards social equity?
Towards addressing social equity.
Sure. So, through the nonprofit consortium, we work with community organizers to create something called the Commitment to Action Towards Racial Justice. We've had over 67 organizations sign on, including the city. So, in that Commitment to Action Towards Racial Justice, we commit to listen, learn, act, and be held accountable and hold each other accountable to a set of actions to improve equity in our community. So, we identify several ways that we can listen, learn, and act, and measure our progress towards those efforts. So, listening involves learning from others with lived experience in our community that deeply understand and acknowledge what it means to be a person of color and experience in justice. We need to learn. We need to rely on our community resources, like the Diversity Council and Inter-Cultural Mutual Assistance Association and others, about what sort of trainings are available to improve the culture within our organizations and within our community overall. And then, we need to act. We need to look at our policies. We need to figure out where we can change our practices to be more equitable in our hiring, in our boards, in the makeup of our boards, in the way we look at everything, adopting a lens of equity in how we set policies as a community to uphold the quality of life for all residents here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kathleen, same question.
Would you repeat the question, please?
Sure. In response to the death of George Floyd, the city issued a community letter earlier this year committing to ongoing efforts around social equity. What additional steps does the city council need to take in this direction?
Well, I think the death of George Floyd was egregious and hopefully never will happen again. And we must do everything we can as a community. The thing I suggest we do first is look inside our own hearts to understand things like unconscious bias, that helps guide policies. We have a lot of work to do in Rochester. Many of the data points on equity show huge and serious gaps, gaps in healthcare, health outcomes, education achievement, and economic opportunity. So, what I think the city, I would urge the city to do, is to work with everyone, including the county that deals so much with public health. We have to close the healthcare outcomes, to work with the school board, to be a true partner in closing the educational gaps. And the city has to really look inside, and I think do a much better job of economic development. I truly believe the city has abdicated its responsibility to economic development, to growth and support of small business, which is 30% of the economic base in our community. One in three jobs come from small business, and it's time to lean into that responsibility more, using tax dollars, et cetera, to support small business rather than big business. We do not need more hotels. That does not create equity. We do need a stronger economic base, particularly, we need more support in our minority and women-owned businesses. So, I believe social equity comes from increasing opportunity for all and closing the gap between opportunity and equity. We love to say everyone has opportunity, but the reality is equity comes when everyone can truly walk through the door and capture the opportunity that does exist. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vanjie. In response to the death of George Floyd, the city issued a community letter earlier this year commenting on ongoing, committing to ongoing efforts around social equity. What additional steps should the city council take in this direction?
It is unfortunate that it had to take the death of an unarmed black man up in Minneapolis for us to address this issue, but we need to fundamentally change how we approach public safety in Rochester. We have to focus on building community, trust in law enforcement by direct engagement and outreach in community, and implementing better prevention and intervention strategies. Overpolicing and criminalization has harmed communities of color disproportionately than white communities. It is our duty to empower community members to demand more equitable policing and to work together with law enforcement to rebuild public trust. So, creating reform, what does that look like? It means that we need to really address culture. If we say that there is systemic racism in public safety and policing, then we need to address that, and that actually costs us nothing to do. Do we need to continue to militarize our police? No, we don't need to do that in Rochester. But equity also means that the war on drugs needs to be moved towards war on poverty, and that's really where equity, our equity lens needs to be focused on, is creating a strategy to help bring people out of poverty.
Thank you.
One of you will become the president of the Rochester City Council, making it historic. It'll be the first time we have a woman as president of our city council. We currently are making history with our first female mayor, and that means one of you will work closely with our mayor. As city council president, people with concerns inevitably will write an email, a letter, and will write to the mayor and the city council president. They're oftentimes difficult issues, whether it is from an individual resident, business, or the school board, et cetera. Explain your style of conflict resolution and how you would work with the mayor to resolve a conflict, whether it's a large issue with a business, with DMC, or with a homeowner who has their own individual problem that needs addressed by the president and the mayor. Kathleen, let's start with you.
Well, thank you for that question, Betsy, because it is fundamental to leadership. And I think it's not just a question about conflict resolution, but it is how do you lead? And leading requires building relationships. I am a leader who believes in relationship leadership, consensus building, knowing people, understanding people, understanding their hearts, understanding and finding that common ground. And with people who are involved in civil service, in public service, there is a common ground. It's that common ground of caring. You don't do this because of, it's altruism. You do this because you want to serve. So, you find that common bond of service, and you work from there. And I think in conflict resolution of any kind, there are some principles that come from simple behavioral psychology of conversation, finding that common ground, reflecting that problem back, finding where is that area where you can come to resolution and meet that individual's needs without disrupting other people. We have a lot of, and it's one of the reasons I'm running, because I've been disturbed with the culture of the city council. I've been disturbed by the bullying, the shaming, the inability to work together to find common cause. As the leader of the city council, if I have the privilege of being elected, I want to work together with the other council members and the mayor to find that common agenda and to work towards it, to work strategically towards it, and that will help us in dealing with conflict, where we start from a base of unity and single-minded purpose, and that purpose being service. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Vanjie?
Politics has always been very divisive. And campaigning, I've learned that lots of folks have lots of opinions about how you make decisions, and it's really important to be able to hear that and listen. A lot of folks talk about that listening is an important skill that a leader should have, and that's a given, but I think a good leader or a great leader is able to be empathetic. As a person who has been negatively impacted by discriminatory laws and policies, I get it. I understand the importance of direct democratic representation. So, I've worked with the mayor on several different issues. We've disagreed on things, but we've always been able to have a civil conversation, and I think that's the importance of working with other council members, with the mayor, is that we can disagree but still be able to respectfully have conversations to get to a solution, to an innovative solution for all of us to be able to come to consensus, especially when it comes to solving problems for residents here in Rochester. And residents in Rochester are very diverse, and their needs are very diverse, and we're not, you know, we all have different skills and experiences and backgrounds. We're not going to be able to always understand, but we can try to meet folks where they are and provide them the resources and the solutions that they need to make sure that we can help solve whatever problem they have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brooke?
Sure. I often say in these forums that I'm a small business owner, but I don't say much about what I do. So, I'm going to share what I do, which is sort of a specific niche, but it is incredibly powerful and part of the reason that I am running for city council president in particular. My job is bringing diverse stakeholders together, representing all sorts of interests, and finding that shared value and vision in working together from a place that acknowledges where people or organizations are coming from as individuals, but also where we're collectively committed to moving forward. So, I have a whole toolbox full of tools that I use in facilitating those conversations to really make sure that the dynamic stays positive and forward-moving. I'm a gracious and respectful leader, but I am effective, and I know how to have difficult conversations across organizations that bring different values to the table. I also know that the voice of people with lived experience and living in challenging circumstances has to be heard as well. So, how do we figure out where those values align and how we can move forward together? I work with the mayor very closely right now through our COVID response, and also agree and disagree on some issues, but that's okay, because we still figure out what is that shared value? How do we move forward to best meet the needs of the community right now, given our lack of resources and needing to have that collective effort? Thank you.
Thank you. The city is facing a potential revenue reductions in the wake of the coronavirus pandemic, and candidates have lost the desire to cut taxes. The result would require some belt tightening. What would be your first target when it comes to a potential budget cut? And we'll start with Vanjie.
I think it's always difficult to talk about cutting the budget, especially the idea of having to either furlough employees. Where I think would hurt people the less is cutting back on some of our capital improvements and the construction that we probably have planned in the next year. We have stopped a couple of those construction projects, but when it really comes down to it, it is about how we are going to reinvest some of the budgets that we have already approved for 2019, 2020. But we're not really sure how this pandemic is going to affect us. We did get $5.1 million from the CARES Act to help support small businesses, and of course, we want to be people-focused when we're using that money. We are using $750,000 of it with a kind of a public works project to really help uplift residents. And I think when it comes to belt tightening, we need to really make sure that we're not disaffecting people as much as possible, because this is going to be a really difficult time, and we have to work together to make sure that we keep all residents here in Rochester above water, as much as the city too, right? We are a strong city. We have a really great economy, and I think that we will find a great solution to be able to get through this as unscathed as possible, but it will be difficult, and we'll have to make some tough decisions. I don't want to cut taxes, but I think that we shouldn't raise taxes currently if we're talking about raising property taxes, and that's also something that we have to work with the county and the school board.
Thank you. Kathleen, what would be your first target when it comes to potential budget cuts?
Well, I think that's a really good question, Randy, but I'd like to just push back on it a little bit and say, what I would do is say, we have to really reform how we budget. And even now, we have to have a budget that is performance-based budgeting. It is not, we assume we're going to maintain where we are and then add on. I think we need to have more outcomes measurement of the success of the programs that are in place, evaluate them based on data. So, I'm hesitant to say, I say, this area gets cut? I think, let's look at what's performing, what's not performing? Are we spending smartly? We should be using data. Many municipal governments our size have a much more sophisticated budgeting process. We're moving in that direction, but it is a snail's pace. We have to step it up. Now's the opportunity, and now I think we are absolutely mandated to do much more performance-based budgeting. And look at the size of the growth of government. We have 1,200 employees in this city. When you combine that with the number of people who are working in the county, and can we have better synergies as well? So, I'm not ducking your question, Randy. I'm saying, I think we need to have a process reform that is not done strictly by the administration, but the city council has to get in there more, demand more outcomes measures for programs before decisions are made. And in the meantime, I think we have to do what every family and small business is doing right now, looking at every single penny. Are they as efficiently spent as possible? So, I don't think it's programmatic. I think it's efficiency, outcomes-oriented budgeting that is absolutely essential, always, but right now particularly. Thank you.
And Brooke, what would be your first target when it comes to potential budget cuts?
So, it's my understanding from speaking with city administration that the plan is for department heads to come together to talk about what sort of priorities they have to keep for funding next year and where there are opportunities to cut. I think this is an important step that we're thinking as a system in our city, in that we're not working in silos, because silos need to stop. However, to make this a more effective process, I think two really critical things need to happen. I think we need to be working with our partners in this community that are also facing these very same questions, the county, our private sector, the school district, the nonprofit community. We have an opportunity to think about where we want to go, what do we want this community to look like, and how do we collectively use our resources as smartly as possible in this time of crisis to achieve that? And then, how do we engage voices around our community in different and smart ways so we can learn what are the priorities of our community to uphold that quality of life? So, it's not the city making decisions about what to cut in a silo or in a vacuum. It is thinking as a system of resources that we are investing in our community to bolster the economy in a really difficult time. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. You all have very active and impressive ties to the community and to nonprofits and to a lot of organizations. If elected, what would you do to make sure that there is no perceived conflict of interest involving your current or past community roles? Brooke, we'll start with you.
So, I'm very fortunate in my job to have projects with a variety of organizations here and work with all different partners in our community. So, there isn't one particular organization that I have a strong affiliation with. However, I do understand the landscape of organizations in our community and know what each is bringing to the table and how they can best work together. If I am elected, I will be stepping back from my role with the nonprofit consortium and continuing to work on a few other small projects in the community. So, I am maintaining that close connection with the pulse of the community and what the key needs are, but not exhibiting any conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Kathleen?
Thank you for that question. I think it's an important one. And when I decided to run, throw my hat in the ring, I approached my board at the Chamber of Commerce and said, I'm going, I'm going to do this. I'm going to do my darndest to win, but even if I don't win, I think you should act and move forward as though my time with the chamber is over. So, I will be leaving the chamber, win or lose. Especially winning, I think it would be a clear conflict of interest, that I never would want to put the organization I have served and care so much about in that position. So, I would be, I have let my board know, they're beginning a search process, and it's not out of arrogance, it's out of belief that they need time to prepare. And in terms of my other volunteer activity with organizations like the Salvation Army, the United Way, and the Jeremiah Project, if I were to win, I would certainly have to consult with the city council, the city attorney, to see what kind of activities I can do. But right now, I'm devoting a significant amount of my time and treasure to the strength of many organizations in town, especially those three, which I think really add and will be adding to the quality of life for many in our community.
So, to be clear, it's now a news story that you're leaving the chamber no matter what?
Yes.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Yes. I could not put an organization in a position of having to deal at a short notice with a leadership transition. So, yes, I am.
I got you.
It breaks my heart, but yes, I am, because I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Kathleen. Vanjie?
Well, you will be missed, Kathleen, from the chamber.
I know. I just didn't know that anybody knew that yet.
Breaking news!
There it is.
So, my ties with my past organization is that I was employed with them, but the work that I did with them was community outreach, working with communities that are usually underserved. I don't have any direct ties with them. I don't have any direct ties with any other volunteer organizations that I've been with before, but at the end of the day, I have, I am not beholden to anyone other than the people of Rochester. And those are the people that I'm running to serve for. And so, I will, so that's basically where I stand.
That's very good. Vanjie, thank you. We are out of time. So, that final question will have to be tabled. With that said, we do need to do closing statements. And Vanjie, if you would start with that, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you, KAL and 125 Live and the Post Bulletin for holding this forum. So, we must embrace an expansive vision for the Rochester economy that creates jobs, putting 21st century public investment first, advances economic equity for historically underserved residents, and protects the environment. Times are strange and uncertain. We need leaders who are resolute in their convictions and stand in their integrity. Rochester leadership needs to get ahead of the economic cliff our nation is heading towards. The city has a social contract with its residents to ensure that we all can succeed and thrive. We all need to work together to come up with creative solutions for complex issues we are currently facing. If we all work towards a common goal, we can achieve wonderful things. We cannot do that if we see each other as enemies, or our common enemy is poverty. For Rochester to heal, to thrive, and grow from the global pandemic and the public health crisis that is systemic racism, we need to listen and uplift all Rochester residents, especially those that have felt unheard and unseen by city leadership. It is time we make Rochester a truly welcoming city that values all of its residents, both the native-born and immigrant, white and black indigenous people of color, straight, and LGBTQ+, both the poorest of our residents, including the homeless, as well as male physicians and CEOs. Rochester can only heal and be a truly great city when all of us are heard and valued. I believe I am the right leader to make that happen, and Rochester is ready for a leader like me. Learn more about my campaign and my platform at vanjiecastro.com. And please vote for me on August 11th. Thank you.
Vanjie, thank you. Kathleen?
Thank you to 125 Live for hosting, for the Post Bulletin, and to KAL, to ABC 6 News for asking really good questions, and for all those who are present today and viewing. Campaigning during a pandemic has been interesting, to say the least. So, having these forums has been so, so important. Connecting virtually, while it's not as satisfying as face-to-face meetings, is so, so important. And I thank everyone who is a part of doing this. I also thank my opponents. For much of my career, especially in the early days, I was usually the only woman in the room. And now, to stand on a stage running for office with two other women who I respect is a great, great thing. And no matter what happens, I'm excited that this city will have a woman leading the city council. I hope it's me. I'll be honest. I hope it's me. I hope you vote for me. I'll be straightforward. There's my East Coast coming out, I guess, not Minnesota nice. But I'm running because I believe my experience and the skills I've had. I'm offering the learnings of a lifetime where I've worked with all forms of government, built partnerships, created programs, created teams that believed, that could do much more than they ever thought they could do. I'm running on that record of strong, proven leadership. And my platform is pretty straightforward, yet all things are complex. I want to build a strong economic recovery for everyone. We have to close those gaps that exist in our community. I want Rochester to become the most inclusive community we can. And I want to champion a high and sustainable quality of life for everyone in this community. I have not the audacity to say I would do that alone. I will do that in collaboration with the other leaders in this community, with the other organizations in this community through new innovative outreach. So, I ask for your vote. I ask for your support. And I also ask for respect for all of us standing here together today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Brooke?
I agree with what others have said. Thank you so much for hosting, for attending virtually or in person. It means the world to have the opportunity to share our thoughts. And to the other candidates, always a pleasure. And on we go. So, I believe you should support me as a candidate, as your candidate for city council president, on August 11th and again on November 3rd because I'm not only a small business owner and a trusted and effective leader in our community, but I'm a mom of two young sons and a daughter of retired parents who live here too. And I deeply care about their lives and quality of life in this community. I understand what people are going through in this crisis because I'm living it too. I'm at the heart of our community's efforts to support people and create efficient, just, and thoughtful systems that work together to meet our shared goals. My strength is in learning from a broad array of voices to find that shared value in move forward. I'm not an activist in the traditional sense, but I am active within a system to support business and human services together and make Rochester a better place to live and a better place to do business. We need to drive efficient and effective delivery of government services that all taxpayers see the value of. This will require new creative public-private partnerships around issues such as transportation, housing, and economic development. I understand we're building on many community strengths, and we have the opportunity to be bold and think differently about how we're going to do this in the face of a crisis. I want this community to be the very best it can be for people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds to thrive, so people can thrive for generations to come. And please check out brook2020.com for more information. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Ladies, thank you, knowing that we are going to be in good hands with any one of you as a city council president. So, thank you for your service, for your campaigning, and for being here today. For all of those who have been viewing online, we thank you for tuning in. We will have a wrap-up tonight on ABC 6 News. I'm pretty sure the Post Bulletin will have a story or two, correct?
Probably.
With that said, we appreciate you and all of you for being here. Thank you.